Good afternoon and welcome to the post-agenda, Cablecast Post-Agenda on the Commission on Infrastructure, Asset Reporting and Investment for Wednesday, June 5th, 2024. For the record, we are joined by council members Warwick and Wilson, and other members may join us shortly. We have, joining us today is invited guests, Chair of the Infrastructure, well, for short I'll call it the Infrastructure Commission, which is colloquially how we talk about it, the Chair of the Commission, Darren Kelly, and we have Patrick Cornell, who will be sharing a brief presentation prior to taking questions from council members. I'll start with our invited guests for any opening remarks that you might have before we turn it over to the formal presentation.
Go ahead, Darren.
First and foremost, it's great to see everybody. It's been a long time since we got a chance to come down and just talk about what we look at as the most important issue facing us here in the city of Pittsburgh, which is our infrastructure. And we're here to have some, anything that you want to talk about. This is an open dialogue. We're very proud of everything that's going on, so when you're proud of something, it's easy to talk about it.
Thanks. Like Darren said, we have been working very diligently as a group, the commission. We are seventeen strong out of twenty-one, so we're still working to fill up some of our other seats. We have been tasked by code to come and report to council twice a year on the status and state of the city's infrastructure, so this is our first report, and anything we need to do to have better information or more frequent information, we are ready and open to listen to what city councils needs and wants are. So with that, I will go ahead and jump into a presentation in anticipation of the written report that will be submitted to city council with the mayor's agenda this week. Alright, so the way we structured the report as a group, we want to talk about the history of the group, what is actually in code, what we've done thus far. We spent a lot of time talking about bridges, because that was the infrastructure class that is most apparent, especially after the collapse of the Fern Hollow Bridge in 2022. But there's still a lot of work to be done on our side of things, so we'll just run through kind of where we are, what we've done, and what we hope to do as we move forward with this commission into the future. So, Ordinance 7 of 2022, I'm not reading all of these small words that are on the screen, and you will get copies of the presentation. The commission was created by Ordinance 7 of 2022, which created an entire chapter in city code, Chapter 179H. There are six purposes and duties of this commission, highlights there being to provide recommendations to the mayor and city council, and advise these groups on best practices for short and long-term investment in major city-maintained infrastructure assets. We are tasked with identifying and reporting on the investment needed to achieve and maintain that. That really alludes to having a good inventory of all the assets that we have, I'll touch on that in a little bit. One of the corresponding sections of code is Chapter 118, Section 3, Infrastructure Asset Reporting. So we are also tasked with working with the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to define what infrastructure we are talking about when they do their annual reporting as required by code. That was set up similarly in 2022. We have to, again, assemble existing asset conditions, and then kind of, there's a little bit of a catch-all, right? So identify related matters which may impact the mission of the commission, including but not limited to transportation improvement program, which is how most of our major bridge and road projects route through the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission, monies from the state and federal government, infrastructure funding in general, labor market conditions, and supply chain conditions. And all of this is supposed to be worked through and is guided by, you know, the ten commitments of racial equity that city council passed in 2020. So there's a lot of things for this commission to work on and work towards. We've taken some small bites, and there's certainly a lot more to go on. We have to submit our meeting agenda in minutes to council, the controller, and the mayor. David Maynard in OMB has been sending those notifications out more recently, and like I said, we have to report and present findings, guidance, and recommendations to council twice annually. We are working with a May, early June, perhaps November schedule, but that will be at the pleasure of the body. So like I said, there are twenty-one seats, each with four-year terms, a representative from city council, the mayor's office, the city controller, OMB, mobility and infrastructure, public works, public safety, permits, licenses, and inspections, two representatives from organized labor, two representatives from construction, one representative from the National Society of Black Engineers, a Philip Randolph Institute, Southwestern Pennsylvania Engineering Outreach, the African-American Chamber of Commerce of Western Pennsylvania, and four at-large representatives as determined by the mayor. So we have fifteen fully approved commissioners that have routed through the mayor's appointment and council approval. Two of them are almost ready to be sent over for city council approval. We have one ad hoc member, as approved by the commissioners, that is a power that was granted by code. And there are four vacant spots at this time. One formal representative from the city controller's office, one representative from organized labor, one representative from the Southwestern Pennsylvania Engineering Outreach, and I'm missing the last one. One, two, three. I probably will have to check my presentation and see where that last one is. But we're a large group, and even though we have these vacant seats, we have not had issues with quorum, just because there are enough of us at our public meetings. Anything you want to add with that, Darren? Okay. So we've had three formal meetings and one kind of introductory meeting. So that introductory meeting happened in October, and it was more of a meet-and-greet with the people who had been appointed at that time. Our first formal meeting was in December. We had some press coverage for that, so there were representatives from the media there. Our second meeting was in March of this year, and we had one on May 8th of this year. Our next meeting is currently scheduled for August 13th, 2024, and we do expect these to move quarterly. Alright, so the first thing that we've, we've kind of had an interesting time figuring out is how are we defining infrastructure? Because city code actually marks it in several different places. Some categories are listed out in one place, different ones are listed out in another place. So what we are still working through and have been working through is, how do we want to define major city-maintained infrastructure assets? And to us, that's a really important, important thing to figure out, because that then guides DOMI as they work through their commission task reports that they submit in the city. So what's explicitly listed is bridges, tunnels, major roadways, infrastructure that's affected by or at risk of being affected by landslides. It says poles. I couldn't tell you what that means, so we are discussing it, right? But what about our major, our buildings? That's infrastructure. What about utility infrastructure? What about broadband infrastructure? So we've been doing a lot of research to think about what should be included, what should not be included, and we've actually, at our last meeting, thanks to Council President Strasburger and Alina in her office, we had a lot of comparative research. So we pooled definitions, and I'm sure, you know, we can probably share this information with city council, but we looked at all levels of government. So we looked at how do other cities define it? Cleveland, Philadelphia, Milwaukee, St. Paul, some of the larger cities, New York and Los Angeles. How do states define infrastructure? How do some of our federal entities define it? In particular, we thought that the White House definition was interesting, because that, that tends to influence a lot of the grant opportunities that may become available with their definitions. The Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, that's kind of a more of a modern fresh take on what infrastructure means and how it interacts with our built environment. And then FEMA, you know, Federal Emergency Management Agency. How do we respond to public safety emergencies with respect to infrastructure, and how does that impact what the city of Pittsburgh can and should be doing? We also looked at some affiliate groups, the American Society of Civil Engineers and the National Academy of Engineers. So at the May meeting, I wasn't present, but there was a lot of discussion about, you know, pros and cons of these definitions, and we expect to, to have a more formal definition ready by our next meeting or for the meeting after that. So once we have a clear definition that really guides our scope, then we can begin compiling our inventories and then work to properly assess our investment needs. We know that some of these infrastructure classes, we already have a really good sense of, of what the city owns and maintains. For example, bridges. Everything that happened after Fern Hollow with the Bridge Asset Management Program really ensured that our inventory for bridges is up to date, it's accurate, we know what that status is. So that's the infrastructure class that will probably be the easiest to, to get clear answers for here. But beyond that, we know that there are a lot of internal city databases that we need to start pulling data from to, to figure out the next steps. We have started working with DOMI to build dashboards for the ones that are explicitly mentioned in code, and the first one, obviously, that they worked on was bridges. That's been a major driving force for DOMI's work over the past two years. So again, the Fern Hollow Bridge, the collapse kind of led to the creation of this commission. It led to the creation of the Bridge Asset Management Program. So that's really what we've been talking about for our, our three formal meetings. We have had representatives from WSP, who is the consultant, kind of the lead driver of the engineering firms that DOMI has been working with, come in. Like I mentioned earlier, the commission voted to have Lou Rusi serve as an ad hoc commission member, given his area of expertise and our focus on bridges. So what we've done is we've had a lot of updates from them. If you move on to the City's Bridge Asset Management Program website, you can see documents that are hundreds of pages long that really pull out where we were, what the key recommendations were, in response to that, where we're going, and where we want to move into the future. So since then, DOMI has had eighteen bridge rehab or replacement projects in the design, engineer, construction phase, a lot of them moving concurrently, and the commission recognizes, you know, how complex these projects really are, and we are, you know, we really applaud DOMI's attempts to improve the processes there that led to, you know, some of the years of disinvestment in the maintenance program. So we've been making steady progress, and we think this is important to highlight here as commissioners, because this is not something that becomes readily apparent to the public. It's a little in the weeds, in the details, but there has been a lot of progress in maintaining everything that was flagged during our citywide inspection that happened in March 2023. I mean, we'll acknowledge that bandwidth and funding continue to limit our capacity. We have had some successes right off the bat. I know, in my role with OMB, you know, we came and, the mayor presented to city council a budget last year that had allocations for positions for a bridge maintenance crew that council approved, put in the budget. We have hired those positions, so they are really starting to jump in and bring, like we said, some of these in-house. We're still partnering with our external partners to do a lot of this work as well. We are doing work at a, a rate that is faster than the, the problems are appearing, and I don't think we could say that before. So we are actually starting to dig ourselves out of the backlog, and you know, now that we have these operational positions, we should be able to, to really increase that volume But there's still more we need to do. We need to do more than just eliminate the risks that are identified in inspections. We need to be more proactive and move into preventative maintenance to do that seriously. Through the budget cycle or from finding additional funds from external sources, we really need to make sure that funds are there, and I expect that this body, the commission itself, is going to submit some formal budget recommendations. I'll probably step back from that, given my, my city role, but make sure that the commission's requests are known as part of the budget process to add, maintain, you know, whatever that recommendation looks like. So by maintaining our bridges to be safe and useful throughout their maximum life cycle, we will significantly relieve some pressures on DOMI's capacity to replace them. You know, we don't want to see bridges collapse in the city of Pittsburgh. That's just nothing that can happen again, so taking the time now to make sure things don't happen in the future is, is one of the major things that DOMI has worked towards, and this commission will continue to study and review and report on. Did I do that one? I did that one. Okay. So there's also some key metrics to show the work that DOMI has done. Again, we'll make sure that this PowerPoint presentation is shared out, but where we were in 2023 is very different than where we are in 2024. So bridge inspections are rated priority zeros, ones, and twos. Zeros are really issues that are found that should be completed within a week, in seven days. Priority ones must be completed in six months, and priority twos should be completed, must be, should be completed in two years. When we started this, I think one of the important things to note in 2023 is there were twenty-seven priority zeros, and we did all of them. So that is a major accomplishment, that the ones that were imminently in need of repair have been repaired. Priority ones of the seventy that were identified, you know, last year in 2023, twenty-two were finished. Some of them were scheduled, some of them were deferred, and in priority twos, there were sixty of them. Only seven of them were completed. Again, that's a two-year kind of window for the ideal course correction. Again, you see some of those were deferred. But moving into 2024, thirty-seven priority ones have been completed this year, eleven are scheduled, and two are in progress. Only three have been deferred, and of the priority twos, seven have been completed, but six are scheduled, two are in progress. So DOMI is really making the effort. They are taking the recommendations very seriously. We see that as commissioners, and we think that is, is a good path forward, but like I said, you know, there's a lot more that could be done with additional funding and with more preventative work to keep things from coming up as a priority in the first So on the outreach side, commissioners want to help the city better communicate progress and challenges to the public. We will try to attend community meetings to increase our recognition. I'm hoping that commissioners have more opportunities to go to sites to see projects that are under construction or in the process of being, even if it's a bridge being cleaned or something being flushed out. We want to really understand what is happening so that we can help report it back via another method. So we know that the administration is going to put out communications, city council's going to put out communications. We just want to be another, another tool in the tool belt to make sure that residents, visitors, people who are in town understand what's going on and how we have reacted to some of the, the more precarious situations. Definitely need to thank David Maynard, like I said, management analyst in OMB, he's back here. Thank you, David. He really helps with the logistics of all of the, the meetings themselves. I'm sure you all know that scheduling things with five people, let alone twenty-one people, is not fun or easy, but he's also taken a, a big role in helping with the agenda with minutes, with the, the content of, of our meetings. And then again, to Alina in the office of Councilperson Erica Strasburger for the comparative definitions of infrastructure that, that she so generously provided to us. So what does this mean? We've got some action items. We want to let you know as a body, because this is what we intend to work on for the remainder of this year and into the future years. Short term, we want to formally define the infrastructure assets that we will study. From there, we'll create or curate, knowing that the data probably already exists, an inventory of the city's infrastructure assets. We'll research those conditions and investments, the investment needs. Submit additional bridge budget recommendations to Mayor Gani and to city council in advance of the release of the preliminary budget in September. If the timing works out and something comes up in November, that aligns perfectly with an additional series of recommendations to city council for December. And then finally, we want to increase the commission's presence in the community and online. We've started working with DOMI on some of these dashboards, but anyway, we can really further this goal and mission is, is our hope. That's all I have. So a quick, a quick presentation for you today. We know, like I said, there's a lot more to be done. It's going to take time. So we'll level set right here immediately, it's going to take time. There's a lot of things that we have to dig into various sources of information, talk to a lot of project managers, and all of us have other full-time jobs. So we're working through as best we can, but we look forward to serving the city as our terms continue. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kelly, do you have any, anything to add before we take questions?
There is, there is a few things. Number one, I couldn't be prouder of this commission to have us all step in under, let's be honest, I mean, this was not an issue of seeing the light, this was an issue where we felt the heat as a city of Pittsburgh, recognizing what we have to do and not plan just for now, but twenty, thirty, forty years down the road, so our children, our grandchildren have something that they can look back and not realize what everybody has done to make this happen. This is not about recognition. I cannot thank the mayor's administration, this body, the controller, DOMI, everyone, every piece of information that we've asked for, and some of it, to be honest with you, may not have been readily available, worked so hard to, to make that happen, and all for one common goal, which is to get us to where we need to be. I cannot be prouder of this gentleman here who worked hard, and so we are very, very proud, and that's why we're here. I commit to be here every time that this comes to council, I will be there with you. If there's anything that you need, all of you, I know all of you personally, you can all call me. This is something we are taking very, very serious, and because it's going to go the other, we're going to come to you as the legislative body of this great city for, for funding, and we understand that you may need our help to make that happen as well. So we're committed all the way around. This cannot be a half-end project. We look at this as kind of like the pyramids, there's a reason why the pyramids lasted for, you know, thousands, thousands of years, because the bottom part was always the strongest, and the first blocks, and that's what we're here to do. So we're here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you so much. Before we do that, I neglected to say that I, I am the city council's representative on the commission. I'm proud to be on the commission, and haven't yet really had the opportunity to talk to any of you about your questions or your expectations of the commission, so maybe it should go without saying, but I'm looking forward to hearing your questions and the comments and reactions today to help guide me as I participate on behalf of the body. So with that, I will go in the order of, of those who, who came, and should also recognize that we have been joined by council members Barb Warwick, Kahari Mosley, Bob Charlin, Daniel Lavelle, Council President Lavelle, and Deb Gross. So with that, we'll go in that order with Councilperson Warwick.
Great, thank you, and yeah, thanks for, for all your work on the commission. So, yeah, just initially, so with regards to the sort of urgent stuff today, right? The bridges. I know in District Five, we have three major PennDOT rebuilds on 376. We have the Charles Anderson Bridge ongoing. We have the Swinburne Bridge that is going to be replaced. We have at least three smaller bridges, one in Hazelwood and two in the Thirty-First Ward. And then we also have a, a large PWSA stormwater project, which is in the books, you know, on, on the schedule. So that's, that's a lot of work being done in, in, in one district, and you know, when it comes to, I mean, I, you know, as you sort of track progress, just keeping in mind, and I know DOMI is doing this with PWSA, timing, traffic, you know what I mean, like this, because these are major years-long projects that have significant impact on, on people's ability to get around town, and also just on, and for some, you know, could impact their homes, and certainly, whether that's years-long of work that's happening, like literally right over your home, or actually impacting the location of the home itself. So I hope that the commission will consider those things. So, but as far as future planning, I guess I wanted to, I mean, and I'll let you both comment, sort of, you know, when it comes, you know, we, we talk a lot about bridges, we talk a lot about road infrastructure, and a lot of that is, is highly car-centric, right? But when we're looking toward the future, I, you know, I, everyone here has heard this pitch from me before, but you know, I always want to say it again, is, you know, when we talk about equity and sustainability and livability, right? Just quality of life in the city, reducing the number of cars that are clogging our roads and, you know, is, is, is paramount. And so that means, of course, transit infrastructure, whether that be, you know, bus, you know, keeping in mind that, and I understand that's the county PRT, but you know, number of buses, bus service, that those are all, when you, when you think about defining infrastructure assets and what that means, remembering that it isn't just the places where the car, you know, it's, it's sidewalks, it's buses, it's, it's all those other ways that we get around the city, and those are the future. I mean, if you look at big cities, you know, the big cities where people, you know, world-class cities in the United States, around the world, they all have outstanding public transit, right? They are all places that you can ride bikes and walk, and Pittsburgh, there's no reason, I don't think, that Pittsburgh can't be that. We just have to decide that that's what it's going to be, and, and so for the city, you know, for your vacant spots on the commission, I think, you know, if, if there's a way to get folks in those spots who are, have, you know, oriented around public transit, bike infrastructure, that, that's just to have those voices on the commission, I think would be good. I mean, even Fern Hollow, you look at that project, and DOMI and PennDOT really did a fantastic, the, the ability to ride a bicycle now between Point, you know, Regent Square, Point Breeze, and Squirrel Hill, it's, it's outstanding now. Before it was, you know, it was, to, to ride a bike on Forbes Avenue was like out of the question, but now with that bridge and then some of the work that DOMI has done with the other sort of connecting bike paths, you can very easily ride a bike between those two neighborhoods, and it's, it's great, right? And it's something you can do almost, almost year-round. And, you know, in terms of investment and budget recommendations, I, this is my, you know, I'll, I'll say this over and over and over again.
You came prepared.
Yeah, like over and over and over again. You know, if you've ever ridden, if, if you haven't ridden one of the Pogo e-bikes, right? Those bike shares, I absolutely ride one, right? Ride one for, I, I rode one for two minutes, and I bought myself my own e-bike in the next day. I mean, that's how incredible they are. Go up the hills, it's no problem. You know, for, for forty million dollars, one-time investment of forty million dollars, we could have those shared e-bike stations, which also hold scooters, you know, if they, you know, that's an option too, in those same corrals. We could have those stations within a five-minute walk of every single house in Pittsburgh, within a five-minute walk. And, you know, if we could do that over the next four years, you know, my kids, who are twelve years old, when they turn sixteen, if they're just e-bike, right? Like they're just e-bikes right there, they can get anywhere in town, why would they even think about buying a car, right? And why, if you want to move to Pittsburgh from the Silicon Valley, from the tri-state area, from, you know, you know, Austin, wherever, you don't want to have, to have two cars so that you can get, you know, go like a mile and a half to get your kid to daycare, and you want to be able to get around town car-light at, at, at minimum, right? Like one car per family. It reduces emissions, it reduces congestions, it reduces traffic deaths, you know, it makes just living in Pittsburgh more relaxing and safer. It improves health overall, and, and most primarily, it increases economic mobility by making it possible for everybody to get around, right? Right now, twenty percent of Pittsburghers don't own a private vehicle, and it is, I don't know if you've ever tried getting around town without a car, or... And it is, I don't know if you've ever tried getting around town without a car or, you know, it's, it's, I, I find it borderline impossible, right? Unless you happen to be working right on, like right on the downtown, right in Oakland, but anything outside of that. So that's my big pitch for infrastructure and I'm happy to hear any thoughts that, that you have on that and, and I'll, I'll leave it at that.
There was, there was, and all the credit goes to the councilwoman. We had one of the biggest things, and I think sometimes we, we as Pittsburghers don't recognize it, you know, we need, we needed help. And most importantly, we needed a vision going forward as we went. And recognizing that there is no wise old man in this playbook. You ask for help, you reach out and see what works in other cities and what doesn't work in other cities. What they classify as infrastructure, what they don't classify as infrastructure. Maintaining, realizing that we don't want to miss anything, but we clearly don't want to get in a situation where it is so robust that we won't be, you know, won't be able to focus on what this commission was designed for. And the councilwoman working with her staff and giving, you know, getting information from older cities, newer cities, bigger cities, smaller cities. Then it will help us and say, okay, this, if this works here, let's reach out with them. Talk to their council, talk to their labor movement, talk to their mayor, find out what's working. And we're recognizing that the only way that this is going to work properly is realizing not everybody knows everything. So that's where we're very much in that type of way. Would you agree with that?
A hundred percent, yeah. And I'd also add too, you know, when we're talking about transit infrastructure, like no, we do not have proper jurisdiction over almost all of that. However, what we have been very cognizant of in budget when we're doing engagement is we will take everyone's suggestions, recommendations, feedback, and we will route them to our partners as we need to. So I don't want that to limit how people want to interact with the commission. We can share comments that come through, even if it's not something we can do on our own or recommend even to council to do. But I don't think that should limit us at all. And I appreciate the idea about how we focus our vacant spots in the future. And I have not had a car for seven years and it's, it's been good. I would love to talk about that anytime. Be true. I have to.
Any further questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Mosley.
Thank you for, for coming today and, you know, me and, and Councilwoman Warwick have similar views, you know, when, when it comes to the role of transit in the larger discussion, you know, of infrastructure, you know, has there been any discussion among the body around, you know, adaptive reuse of our abandoned rail infrastructure? Whether for the expansion, you know, long-term, you know, of our light rail system or, you know, one of the things that, that came out of, you know, my discussions with DOMI is, you know, there are a lot of Pittsburghers that, that do, you know, want to get on bikes, but, you know, are, you know, frankly afraid, you know, to, to, to get on their bike. And I've joked, you know, at, at this table before. For those who know me, I have a penchant for living on the edge. Actually, I kind of get a rush out of riding my bike around the city, not on Penn Avenue, between Braddock and Fifth and some of the more dangerous spots, but I do, you know, you know, ride around on the city streets. But has there been any, you know, discussion among the body, you know, specifically around the abandoned rail infrastructure that we have around the city and the adaptive reuse of that?
Not specifically. The first formal meeting we had, we did kind of go around our table. And people just shouted out different levels of infrastructure. So we have, you know, we worked through, what does it mean? And that's where we then took a step back and realized we need to define what we're working on first before we jump into that. But I will flag that and certainly offer it up to the group for further discussion.
And then another question, you know, is around the larger, you know, role of, you know, investing in our infrastructure. You know, as, as a way to, you know, address, you know, climate change and, and, you know, making, you know, our cities, you know, more resilient. Has there been any, you know, specific, you know, discussion and, you know, and suggestions of things that we should do as a city to make our city more resilient? Particularly our infrastructure more resilient to climate change?
Absolutely. And that is something I think everybody, it's very, it needs to be first and foremost in everybody's mind that we're planning for the future. And that is, I don't care where you stand on the political spectrum. It is an issue and it has to be addressed. And how you even redo your infrastructure can be leaned towards making sure you're protecting the environment. That's just plain and simple. And that's someone that doesn't have the background that a lot of people have when it comes to that. I assure you that that has been brought up multiple times and it will continuously be brought up for sure.
I think one thing that we can add to that too is, you know, DOMI has several product managers working on landslides, a number of landslide remediations at any given time. That is a budget line that is always in the budget at varying levels. So I think the, the idea of being able to then hone in on that, especially as it relates to changing climate is certainly something we want to explore further.
And my last, you know, question is, you know, how do, as, as commission members, you know, well, I guess two-part question. One, you know, has there been, you know, much discussion as well as how do you see the role of this commission interrelate, you know, with, with the comprehensive plan that the city is going to be embarking on, you know, in the, in the very near future? And what role do you see the infrastructure commission interacting, you know, and, and potentially advising, informing and partnering, you know, with, you know, this major comprehensive plan the city will be undertaking?
That is definitely something that's come up and we look forward to engaging, you know, we will reach out in advance, you know, I don't want us to wait to have to be asked to have conversations. As soon as we have information, we want to work with the Department of City Planning to figure out how can we be of use to them? That I think that is something we want to do.
There is, and I believe we had a really, really good conversation on that. Something we are, this is a group that is clearly not, you know, protecting its borders. We want to work with PWSA, Alka-Sant, the state, the county. How many people realize that the three bridges over the county, over the Allegheny right now, aren't even city bridges? Education, cooperation, and planning. All of them fall within the realm of what this council is, is built upon. And that's where we see, we have, we can, we will not be effective as a, a commission or as a council body or as the mayor or as a controller if we're not willing to realize that we have to work. We have to work because every one of the people I just serves a, a role for its residents and a lot of us serve on different, all of you serve on different committees and different commissions. And we have to work all the way from the Southwest Commission all the way through the Port of Pittsburgh, through every commission that this council appoints to to make sure that the residents benefit from this. And we're prepared to do it on all levels. Because one problem that's not corrected of what a commission has, it's going to make what we're trying to do or they're trying to do. You know, you had mentioned the run and, you know, I'm proud from that, if we don't work together with different groups dealing with issues, then all we're doing is just, you know, rubber stamping one and passing it down. And we're not prepared to do that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. And I do want to thank you for getting the pink memo today.
I was about to say the same thing to you. I was like, you look amazing as always, my friend.
I don't know if you're a camera fan, but I'm a camera fan.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate, I appreciate the pink today.
Are there any further questions or comments?
No, that, that's all.
The best one was for last and I appreciated that. Thank you, my friend.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Councilman Charlin.
I'm not sure how I'm going to transition off that. So thank you guys so much for being here today and, and really for kind of giving us a peer into, into this commission and, and the work that you're doing here. I, I want to start off, so you're saying you're meeting quarterly right now. Is that the plan? Do you think that is a time period that works? I, I'm a little concerned as I hear that like we're, we're figuring out definitions that maybe the commission should be meeting more often from the get-go and then, then you can kind of maintain quarterly. Or is it just the, the size of the body that's just not realistic?
The size of the body is one consideration. That is the minimum. We have to meet quarterly. Code says that. We know if there is more pressing needs, there's nothing that's stopping us from meeting more frequently.
Our plan is, you know, right now we're in, we're, we're beyond the development stage. We're getting into the formation stage.
Sure.
We will start to work on subcommittees dealing with, so then we can start to break in then. So the main meeting will start to be almost like a reporting. But just like all of you, you know, have your, have your subcommittees working things out, bringing it back. That's where we plan because we understand that we're going to have different questions, different priorities and different answers. Make sure we're here. And so.
I was gonna say too, during the main meeting, we actually moved into the agenda, kind of some regular updates, like what are key updates on these specific things? So we know that three months might be enough time for some of those items, but we might need monthly, bi-weekly, whatever for some of the other ones.
Well, good to hear that you, you kind of thought about that. I'm, I'm interested also, you're talking about kind of our peer cities and using their definitions in terms of infrastructure and trying to figure out what we want to classify as infrastructure here. But I'm also curious, I, I'm, I'm always, it's like a dagger in my neck every time I hear someone say how unique Pittsburgh is. And yes, Pittsburgh's unique in, in certain ways, but we can learn so much from other cities. And, and I feel like we're like, oh, Pittsburgh's this, this unique place. It's unlike anywhere else. And we can learn, we really need to be looking at what other cities are doing. So I'm curious, not just from looking at other cities definitions and what infrastructure is, but are you guys also looking at what other cities plans are in terms of regular maintenance and, and their reporting and the way that they structure these commissions? And, and what are some of the things that you, you've learned and, and that we can start applying here?
Not with a fine tooth comb, not yet, right? You know, again, this, like I said, it might've been before you stepped in chambers. What we have been tasked to do with respect to reporting out to council is, is relatively flexible. So we're happy to, to hear all of the ideas and things that would be of interest to this body to be able to, to come back to you at future times. But I mean, that, that does make sense, right? I don't want to overstep on what DOMI itself would be doing with respect to looking at other things. But I think from a, a big top-level picture, it makes sense to see what else is going on.
I, I just, I, I worry that we, we try to reinvent the wheel too much and let's, let's learn from other cities' successes and other cities' mistakes. Specifically in terms of maintenance. And the reason that's, that's so important to me is I remember talking to Director Ricks previously and she was saying, you know, the, the amount of money that could be saved in this city by just applying a, a paint of coat or a coat of paint, geez.
Gotcha.
Yeah, a coat, a coat of paint. And what we, what, what money we really could be, be saving in terms of maintenance or in terms of long-term infrastructure, if we would just maintain the infrastructure that we have. And really looking at like what the schedule should be like for that and, and how often we need to be sweeping the streets in front of sewer grates and those sort of, of things. And how important that is before we start talking about like rebuilding a bridge. How do we, you know, the cheapest infrastructure we can have is the one that we already have. So how, how we can save money and, and, you know, do the, do the right thing there. And just, just kind of curious what, what we're learning about from other cities and their, their maintenance schedules and, and how that might be working. So.
And I think we are seeing the fruits of that labor already. You know, a lot of the recommendations that came in for 2023 were fund regular ongoing maintenance, more from the operating side as opposed to the capital side of the budget. And, you know, into 20, the end of 23 with some of the American Rescue Plan dollars and then into 24 this year, we are seeing a lot more of the regular maintenance work occurring. There is the, the new crew themselves. They have applied for and we, the city has received a grant for some equipment and vehicles to really get us in the, the right place to do that. And I know I've seen the plan. They want to keep expanding that crew more and more.
And working with PennDOT is, is very important. We know that they're, they're directly with everything that deals with bridges. So it's important that we bring their expertise in as well. And they're caught up in a situation where they may have the whole, whole region to handle. And like Patrick had said before, you know, we came with the first vision was what needs to be repaired. Now we're coming down the same lane with what needs to be maintained and how do we maintain it? So you're right, there are, in every month, there's a, a new way to do things or how we report it. And this is a matter of not just doing things to make it not just better, but make it right. And that's where we got lucky. We had a mild winter, right?
Yeah.
We've had a relatively, we've had rain, but it's not been hard. It's not been heavy and it's not been consistent. We haven't had the landslide that we've had so many times. So this is also part of the plan. So what's that? Yeah, knock, that's why knocked on wood. I still have that little bit of superstition. But we can't rely on the knock on wood factor.
Yeah.
And a lot of things that we think we have going for the future will allow us to have that type of approach. Fix, maintain, preserve. And that's what we, we've kind of taken that basic motto of going forward. Do not reinvent the wheel.
Yeah.
Learn what makes you better, accept what makes you worse, get over your ego and do what you're here for. And I think that's what we've all accepted that.
Shit that. So in terms of, of the, the commission here, you've kind of talked about how you wouldn't necessarily be directing spending, but would be helping, helping in the budget process in terms of, of directing, funding and, and maybe there's a, I envisioning like when we put a capital budget request in, how does this comply with the infrastructure commission or something like that? Is that kind of how you foresee?
Yeah, I, I would see the commission having more of the guidance and recommendation role. You know, we certainly don't want to step on the toes of the Capital Program Facilitation Committee. And I think one of the things too is a lot of it is in code. It's, it's really, you know, what is going on with the upkeep and improvement of what already exists? So I don't think it would be our place to really talk about new possibilities and new requests. I think that would remain with the administration and with the city council. But I think there's certainly opportunities to work with the capital team. This year's proposal form has already gone out, but to work in, you know, what are the bridge or the infrastructure commission's thoughts on this? How does that impact scoring? You know, that, again, the CPFC scoring is pretty rigidly set in code too, but that could be something to, to think about in the future.
And so, you know, back to the maintenance thing, you know, as you're guiding the, the spending, are, do, do you see yourself as also being able to guide the, the maintenance plan?
That's a good question. I think that, I think that we would need to have an understanding of what regular maintenance for the infrastructure looks like as part of the inventory and assessment. Yes.
I think, I think that's really important. That's something I, I would like to see. And then my, my last kind of question for you is, how can we best interact with your, your commission? I mean, is it, is it a matter of, I, I have an active landslide in the South Side Slopes right now that we're, we're not really moving on at all. Is it me saying to that, to you and, and saying, hey, how do you score this? Why, why does this not score high enough to, to become a priority? You know, how, is it a, you know, do I put in a three-on-one? How, how do we interact with you best? Is it a request for, hey, I've, I've heard complaints that a bridge might look rickety or, you know, whatever it might be. And can you guys tell us how it scores? How, how do we interact?
I, I would think, and, and this is, this is on a hypothetical level. I think we go through the normal procedure. You're working with the city departments. We are not, like, we're not going to supersede what a city, because a lot of our data that we get comes from their expertise. And we are going to rely on their expertise more now than ever. And they're the ones that are going to set, this is the condition. This is the priority. This is the traffic flow. This is how many people it affects. Here's the time. And we're not, as a commission, will, will waver from that. And I give you, I give you my word. You all know me well enough that I'm not going to allow safety to be jeopardized in any way. So if we will allow our departments to do what they always do, and that is to protect its residents. And we'll make the, you know, we'll allow them to make the recommendations. We'll bring it up and it goes in front of everybody. And then, but that's the procedure on a department actually handling things, that will not change, at least in my opinion. And I think that everyone would support that, the professional wise and the consultants or what they see working with, with, with DOMI.
Back to that. Review and guidance is where I see this commission existing in the, the, the city sphere.
So other than monthly court outs, it doesn't seem like there would be a ton of interaction between us or? So other than monthly court outs, it doesn't seem like there would be a ton of interaction between us or?
I mean, I think, I think there could be. Once we have a good set of definitions, inventory assessments. I don't know what we would, if we would need to have more, much, much more frequent conversation. Because again, you know, like Darren just said, it would be the department actually responsible for a fix, you know, maintenance and operations of something.
All right. Thanks, Chief Cornell and President Kelly. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you both for being here. I'm really glad to hear that the commission has been coming together and is looking to the future to figure out how we keep these bridges safe and we keep our, our constituents safe. I'd like to follow up on a couple of the questions that the other members touched upon, which is this idea that I actually blanked out on the total number. What are the, what's the number of bridges? We have a lot of bridges. What are the number? Well, how many bridges are you all looking at? It's 200?
I think it's more than that.
It's, it's actually much more.
Okay.
It's like more than Venice. Literally, we got a lot, like you say.
Okay. So we're, and some of them are large and have high volumes of vehicles and some of them are small. And maybe you're only going over, you know, I'm thinking of a bridge that we, a small bridge that we replaced in maybe like Docalo. It was servicing like five homes. We just relinquished one, I think. We had a discussion at the table. That was going to one parcel. It was just kind of like a overpass over a road and maybe some over one boulevard. So I want to kind of think about like the system. And I think this follows up on both Councilman Mosley's questions and Councilwoman Warwick's questions about just kind of allowing ourselves to not assume that we're going to just replace everything in kind. Right? So let's say that bridge is, you know, was built in the 1970s. It doesn't have to be replaced in the exact same materials or, you know, is it still needed for what its original purpose was? You know, what comes to mind is the Davis Avenue Bridge, which was built as a car vehicle, motor vehicle bridge, and is now not a motor vehicle bridge, was replaced as a pedestrian bridge. And we could probably think of several other examples. The Hotmiddle Bridge was built, you know, between two steel mills and wasn't carrying people or, you know, cars at all and has been converted. So thinking about the Pittsburgh of now, which is not 700,000 people, which is 300,000 people and that population pressures have shifted. Then I say this a lot about my own district, that there are things where there didn't used to be things and there aren't things where there used to be, right? And there aren't churches where there used to be. There aren't schools where there used to be, but now there are churches and schools where there didn't used to be and there are stores and, and, and different destinations that people are trying to get to. And they're also trying to get there maybe in a different mode than they did. Or going back to modes that there used to be, right? So when I first, way before I was on council and I moved into Bloomfield, I had a lot of neighbors who had never gotten their driver's license and they're all maybe World War II generation grandmas who walked to Donatelli's every day. And they had never driven and they, you know, they walked to the grocery every day. So in my constituents, I, I always think choose these neighborhoods in large part because even if they have a car, they don't necessarily want to have to use it every day. Right? So we've had many, many community meetings where the people in that, the audience raising their hands and saying that like, well, yeah, I have a car, but maybe we only use it once a week or I don't want to have to go to, to school, get my kids to school by car or get my groceries by car, get to work by car. I want to not, I want to be able to not use my car. And so I think that is kind of a similar question to what about the, when we redo bridges? And how do we, how do you as a commission, like what information will you need and how do we help you with that information? And how does that interact with the comp plan in a kind of more immediate way, right? Because you're starting to really dig into details now. And so how do, how do we get you the information you need or have you interact with the public conversations about the visions that people have for their neighborhoods?
That's a, that's a really good question. I think we would, we would want to see analyses, syntheses of community engagement, you know, on, on both the council side and the administrative side, there will likely be public engagement, neighborhood meetings, community meetings, et cetera. And if people are really making these, these statements and these assertions, I think that's information that all branches of government, plus the relevant commissions will want to see.
Let me tell you an example of an opportunity we missed. It's not a bridge, but I think there's, it's informative and illustrative because we didn't have clear jurisdiction, which is that Bigelow Boulevard is a PennDOT road. And it was a number of years ago now, probably eight years ago, that PennDOT suddenly decided to redo part of it. The part connecting Polish, like between Polish Hill and Oakland bypasses the Bloomfield Bridge. And they rebuilt it exactly the way they had originally designed it in 1960 or something. And it was a really missed opportunity. We were able to get at least a little traffic signalization coordinated with Baum Boulevard. Luckily, because we caught the, the PennDOT Fifth District guy who's gone now, I can't remember his name in time and we, and the city had been installing coordinated traffic signalization along the corridor of Baum Boulevard that wraps around to the top of, of the Bigelow Boulevard there. But no sidewalks for you to walk from Polish Hill like Heron Avenue around to Oakland. No improvements significant. There could have been significant improvements and there's a real demand and desire and frustration. People have to cross over those pedestrian bridges. We just lost one of those pedestrian bridges at Finland because it got taken out by truck and it hasn't been replaced. PennDOT also recently poured concrete into pedestrian under tunnel so that, you know, it's really difficult to cross Bigelow. And no bike infrastructure that could have been added again, because this, that's like a, there's high, there's increasing population density and pressure in Northern Oakland and in my district and through the strip district. And that's just a, a corridor that people are trying to use and it's not safe for them to use. A similar, you know, it's, it's analogous to Baum Boulevard at the end there where I can tell you 20, 25 years ago, and I always say when everybody was like 80 years old in the neighborhood, people weren't trying to cross Baum Boulevard at Millwood or Millvale. And now you'll see 20 people waiting on a corner. And it's dangerous and people have gotten hit by cars and we'd have to think proactively about what city we're building where and what are the connections and how, what the demand is. It's not the same as even 20 years ago, especially when you have entire neighborhoods turning over. So I would love to see kind of, I know we've, we have a kind of walk bike plan. It probably needs to be updated. Like we're just starting to make progress on like making, on, on, on implementing the plan that was really written 10 years ago. And you know, there's multiple, again, just to stick with that top of Bigelow, there, there's a nearing completion, what 15-story building or so at the top of Millwood and, and Baum? That's outside, it's actually in District Six outside of my district. I think there's another one in the pipeline there. Just a lot of, a place that was fairly low density warehouses, car repair, transmission places, car warehouses is really densifying in both commercial and residential activity. And, and nobody actually even predicted it. But there you have it. So that's, that's an opportunity. I don't know if you wanted to respond?
Well, you had asked what, what could, what could you do? It's to work with us.
Yeah.
Understanding that there are, you know, governmental hurdles that none of us were involved with of establishing, who has jurisdiction over what? What bridge is who, who owns this sewer, where this water line goes, how much this bridge can handle, can this bus go over, can it? So we understand that. And we're willing to work as hard as we can to get the answers that we can, understanding that we've seen change before and recognizing that it takes time. But if it's as simple as things like that, we plan to expand what we can and can't do. I think we've all admitted on that of saying that we cannot allow these, you know, they can be hurdles, but hurdles can be jumped. So I, I just ask, you know, council's commitment just to work with us. And see what, what errors that, that may have been put in front of us and try to correct them. That's my ask if we could.
Great. Thank you. Let's, let's definitely do that. And I think we're going to have a strong partner in our new planning director who himself is a social geographer. He's used to mapping things. So I'm looking forward to that conversation.
May I say one thing to that as well?
Sure, sure.
I think one thing that we can do as the commission is when we're working on the inventory, we can see what existing plans and studies are there. Even if it's just, we know we did the bike plan 10 years ago, things have changed in 10 years. If the answer is the last time it was done was never or in 1994, then that, that could at least flag in recommendations back to this body and the administration that you might want to think about it before you just replace the same one.
Exactly. My second question is a little more on, it's not my knowledge area really. It's more of a materials and engineering question. But I learned a little bit from someone who used to run a rolling, a steel rolling mill and that we used to have quite a few bridges that were open metal deck and not concrete. So, you know, the this road surface that you're driving across is just open metal. And that those last 100 years. And I had that conversation not long before last summer, I went to Chicago. And when you're in Chicago, we were being tourists with friends and there's a boat tour of architecture. The Chicago River comes out at the lake and get on these little tour boats and, you know, you're, you're going under a, a lot of bridges, looking at the big buildings lining and every single bridge is open metal. I have pictures in my phone. I just found them. So you're on the boat and you're looking up and you can see straight through the decking. And I thought, well, gosh, it's work. It's good enough for Chicago. They're short bridges. They're not long spans. It's a much smaller river than our rivers. But some of our bridges are small. You know, they're not necessarily high spans going over a long distance. And so I would encourage you to look at materials that are longer lasting and lower maintenance. That's what I'm understanding, right? Because you don't have the problem with the water collecting, which is what took down the Fern Haller Bridge. Has, has the commission looked at different?
Not yet.
Bridge engineering and materials?
Not yet, but, um, you know, I, I think that.
Pictures in my phone from the Chicago boat tour.
I'm interested to see that. And I think that very naturally lends itself to what we had, you know, told you earlier, that we want commissioners to feel empowered to learn as well. So as part of the education factor, that certainly seems like something we could study. It sounds like a good subcommittee.
Thank you. I think I was the person on council who encouraged there to be an engineering position added on the commission. When we first read it in the first draft that was written, it was like, there's, there are no engineers in these seats. And then my, my last thought is that we often, we have used recently weight restrictions when there was an emergency. And but we don't really need to wait until it's an emergency. And that buys you a lot of time on your infrastructure, you know, even our own roads. And, you know, we, we always say our paving lasts about 10 years. But if it were weight restricted, it would last longer than 10 years on that stretch of road. And again, not an engineer, but assuming the same thing applies to our bridges. So especially in our longer bridges. I was happy that to see a bill this year for a maintenance on the Bloomfield Bridge that was in the tip. And that was to be like, it's in great shape, but we want to make sure we do the maintenance so that stays in great shape. And that's a big bridge. And it's a big concrete bridge. And it carries a lot of load and a lot of weight, I'm sure. But there may be bridges that don't need to have heavy vehicles going over them. I don't know where they are, but it's since we have hundreds. That might be an option that helps you in your kind of big Gantt chart that you're going to end up with of like which bridge needs, which thing, which, how quickly, right? And so to kind of open your mind about that, I don't know if you have thoughts on that?
I just think that's another important thing for us to add, you know, to the inventory as we start to dig into it.
And, and it, it starts, like we had talked about, everything is up for discussion.
Yeah.
And we get into, we're dealing with, with weight limits, we start to really, it really expands.
It really does.
Public transportation, you know, buses weigh more than fire trucks.
Way a lot.
Buses weigh more than, than an aerial ladder.
Yeah.
That's, we start doing, you know, this starts to get into our refuse vehicles.
Yes.
Our salt trucks. There is, there's a lot of things that, that lead into that. So that was something, we'll, we'll see what other cities have. When we talked about, let's see what other cities do. Let's see what they bring in and see what's happened over their time.
You're playing right into my hands, Mr. Kelly, because I have a, a bee in my bonnet about how a lot of our vehicles are too big. So, you know, I, I have photos again in my phone of small snowplows and small refuse vehicles and small electric, you know, recycling trucks and things like that because I've had truck, some of our fleet is so big that it takes out people's property. Because they can't make the turns and alleys in Lawrenceville and things like that. A lot of our, a lot of the roads in my district were built not for large vehicles. So it would be more complex and certainly different than what we're doing now. But to assume that like every single one of our roads or bridges can carry the same size vehicle is just not true, right? And so I, I'm not saying that it's easy to figure out, but it's also something to look at.
A longer term issue. I see what you're saying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., I'm, I'm in chat.
Thank you. I'll add a couple of things and I really appreciate all council members who were here and some had to leave and that's okay. For sharing your thoughts because it's really, I've taken notes and it's really helped to inform me, like I said. And I'm not going to summarize what I've heard at all, but a couple of things that come to mind are my take as, for us as the commission as a next step is, you know, once we have the definition and actually like a big conversation last time was, do we count our city-owned buildings, our vacant lots? Like is that infrastructure? Is it not? That's not DOME. That's other departments. Like we're getting into questions like that, but we're not, but we have to define it. And then I think the most important thing as a next step will be one of our, our charges is creating that existing asset conditions compilation. Because once we have that and we know what is our infrastructure and what is the, the condition of each, then we can make decisions. I mean, that's when that can be, like this commission can start to be informative and augment the work that certainly our city staff have the capability of doing, might, might not have the bandwidth or time to do. So that's where this is sort of an augmentation of, of what the city, you know, DOME or whomever could do. Certainly the need for subcommittees, certainly the need to perhaps consider how we interact with the public and, and the comp plan process and, you know, perhaps even in the future, bringing meetings, commission meetings to various parts of the city and out in the community and inviting council members to attend when we're in their community, just as an idea. One thing I, I also heard and I wish Councilman Charland could hear this, but maybe he's listening or I can follow up with him later is learning from other cities on the definitions. I love the idea of learning from other cities on best practices and maintenance. And I would hope our, our staff representation and also those who we haven't quite really mentioned by name here, but who work in private industry or representatives from the labor, construction community, you know, have expertise from around the country as well. From summits or conferences that they attend and from, from, from reading, you know, their industry periodicals. But we are also, I feel like we've learned a lot from other agencies. So Lou from WSP, but you know, who formerly worked at PennDOT is tremendously helpful to DOME, I know, and to the commission on, on bridges and the lessons learned from how do you prepare and replace, I don't know how many, what it was, like 400 bridges in a span of
It was insane.
Some, certain number of years and they just, the directive was get it done and they got, they figured out a way to get it done. And that's what DOME is learning from is from PennDOT's experience and his expertise. So I think in addition to other cities that, you know, this is an opportunity to learn from other levels of government that have done it before and done it better. And that certainly could be inclusive of the county and from PennDOT and from, you know, federal government as well. So I'll, I'll leave it there. We've had a fulsome conversation. We've had a fulsome conversation, I appreciate it, but is there any other business, any other questions, any other final closing thoughts from members, or from our invited guests here?
I would just say thank you all for the opportunity to come and talk to you. Like you said, robust conversation, more council members than I expected, which I'm really happy to see. So, we appreciate the time, and it's something that we will be able to improve continuously, and we look forward to being back here soon. Darren?
And to kind of, that's a perfect closing line. It's, personally, it's great to see all of you, it's been a long time. You know, this is, this is government at its best. We're very proud to say that, thank you for the amazing questions that you gave us today. And we're committed to doing what anybody that should be in this chair, this is not me, this is not this gentleman, this is the commission that you all had a hand in selecting, and we're proud to stand up in front of you, and most importantly, we're proud of this report, so. And you know how I feel about my fellow city workforce, and this was them, and I'm proud to stamp it.
Thank you. Well, having exhausted the business of this post-agenda, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.